Very good. This is the regular city commission meeting for Tuesday, November 3, 2020. I'd like to call this meeting to order and ask that if you have a cellphone, please turn it to silent or off so that we don't have any interruptions. I'm doing a lot of electronic stuff up here today because we're live streaming as well. So we're going to start with an invocation given by Pastor Josh here from Living Hope Church, and then please remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Let's pray. Dear God, we just thank you for this day. We thank you for this wonderful opportunity that we have to live in such a wonderful city and a wonderful country, God, and we thank you for the freedoms that come from that. God, we pray for our cities, our states, and our country today on this wonderful election day. And so, God, I just pray for those leaders who will be newly elected. May you grant them wisdom, discernment, and strength as they lead our cities, our communities, our states, and our country. God, we pray for unity from this election. God, may you grant our country unity. May we be more unified, strengthened, and encouraged moving forward as we go throughout our workplaces and our schools and our communities, God. Again, Father, we grant wisdom for all our leaders and grant wisdom for this meeting and discernment for this meeting. We give you praise in your name. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Pastor. The first item on the agenda is a ceremonial item, Veterans and Military Families' Day Month Proclamation. Thank you.
Whereas President Woodrow Wilson proclaimed November 11, 1919, as the first commemoration of Armistice Day, and whereas over 100 years later, our nation continues to honor our fallen heroes and commemorate their selfless sacrifices, and to honor our veterans who have courageously defended our country and who now volunteer as mentors, teachers, counselors, and whereas while tens of millions of Americans have served in the United States Armed Forces during the past century, we are reminded that the defense of freedom comes with great loss and sacrifice. And whereas the veteran's courage, dedication to duty, and love of country has made it possible for Americans to live in freedom, and whereas on Veterans' Day, we remember with the highest regard the bravery of a generation of Americans who fought with honor, and we salute the men and women who put their lives in danger to answer the call of duty, and whereas as we give thanks to those who have served freedom's cause and salute the members of our armed forces, we also honor the men and women defending our nation today. Now therefore, I, Woody Brown, Mayor of the City of Largo, Florida, and on behalf of the City Commission, do hereby proclaim the month of November 2020 to be Veterans and Military Families' Month in the City of Largo, to honor our veterans and their families, to recognize the tradition of freedom they fought to preserve.
Veterans' Day occurs on November 11 every year in the United States in honor of the 11th hour of the 11th day of the 11th month of 1918 that signaled the end of World War I, known as Armistice Day. On Veterans' Day, we honor every man and woman who's ever worn the uniform of our nation and those who've selflessly secured America's promise throughout our history. Finally, President Harry Truman said, "Our debt to the heroic men and valiant women and the service of our country can never be repaid." They have earned our undying gratitude. America will never forget their sacrifices. Thank you for this proclamation.
Thank you. Next, we'll hear about Largo's Small Business Month.
Whereas the Largo City Commission is proud to celebrate Largo's local entrepreneurs, their energy, ingenuity, and perseverance, and whereas the city encourages local support of these businesses so they continue to compete, succeed, and grow, and whereas there are over 4,000 businesses operating in Largo that embrace job creation, use innovative technologies, and employ a diverse workforce to preserve the economic well-being of all of Largo's residents, and whereas small businesses are the nation's job creators and comprise 99.9% of all firms in the United States, which make up over 30.7 million small businesses, and whereas half of all businesses are home-based and about 1 in 5 businesses are family-owned, and whereas Largo's businesses contribute to the vibrancy and independence of this community, keep money in the local economy, create jobs, offer important and essential services, and employ a diverse workforce, and whereas the Largo City Commission honors local entrepreneurs for helping make Largo the community of choice in Tampa Bay, and whereas Small Business Saturday is celebrated on November 28, and this important shopping day aligns with Largo's recognition of small businesses, now therefore I, Louis Woody Brown, Mayor of the City of Largo, Florida, and on behalf of the City Commission, do hereby proclaim the month of November 2020 as Largo's Small Business Month in the City of Largo.
Good evening, Mayor and Largo City Commissioners. This is the ninth year that the Largo City Commission has recognized Small Business Month during November to create awareness of the impact local businesses have on the quality of life in the City of Largo. This year, the city will be celebrating and recognizing those essential businesses that have stepped up to the plate to serve the community during these unprecedented times. As such, this year, we decided to do things a little different. Instead of inviting the small businesses here tonight, we will be personally delivering certificates of appreciation to Sunshine Ace Hardware and Minuteman Press. We'll also be shining the spotlight on them via video that we can share over again on social media and other outlets. The video also highlights the Small Business Month activities that we will have in store this year. Let's go ahead and roll the tape. November is the City of Largo's Small Business Month, and this is an opportunity to celebrate the businesses that make Largo the community of choice in Tampa Bay. This year, the city is recognizing two essential businesses that have been instrumental in providing business services and retail services. Largo is proud that Sunshine Ace Hardware and Minuteman Press and their dedicated staff continue to operate and provide excellent customer service right here in the city. Let's hear about their story.
Hi, my name's Jeffrey Gowan. I'm the manager of Sunshine Ace in Largo, Florida, located at 1015 West Bay Drive in Largo. Sunshine has been here for four years. We took over from Hammerhead Hardware. The old establishment had been here for almost 20 years. Sunshine has been located in South Florida, a family-run operation, been located in South Florida for the past 65 years. Early this spring, we were labeled an essential business and able to stay open during the pandemic. It was something that we were very happy with, but also something that we took very seriously, and we really wanted to be essential and be there for our customers and for our community. Our buying staff worked tirelessly trying to find the supplies, whether it be masks, cleaning supplies, wipes, bleach, whatever anyone needed. Our staff would come in early, 5:00 in the morning, unloading trucks to make sure, and we opened the store at 8:00, that we had everything that the customers needed, and if we didn't have it, the customers weren't waiting for us, that they could get on with their day and get what they needed. We understood what it meant to be essential. We took it seriously, and hopefully we lived up to it. We want to be here for our customers, our community, every day, but also when they really need us, whether it be a hurricane or a pandemic or something similar.
Eric with Minuteman Press Printing. We're located on 2475 East Bay Drive. Our website is largo@minutemanpress.com. As these times have been tough, we've been doing a promotion to help other essential businesses out there. Being a family-owned business, we know things are tough. To help our customers first, we always usually beat our competitors by 30%, and not only that, we do a price back match guarantee. Also, we're a family-owned business. My wife is part owner of Minuteman Press as well, but she's filling in as a nurse right now, also helping out the community as well out there, and that's been tough too, obviously, as the nursing is essential out there doing businesses with other businesses. So we've also been supporting it with a website, free website, for local businesses, saying that they're open to advertise their business for free as well. It's working out, and we give them a free COVID poster to go along with it. We can deliver this stuff, or they're absolutely welcome to pick it up at the office. So not only do we do all types of printing, from business cards to banners to letterhead, we also do promotional products too. Mugs, pens, pencils, banners, signs, basically you name it, we can print it or market it for you. That's the other aspect too, what makes us different from other companies. We're not just a printer, we actually help market other businesses. And what I mean by that is we're an extension and a partnership as a team to make sure their company grows, because if their company grows, we grow together. And it doesn't always have to be that sometimes they bring in more, we'll even talk them to go less, is what makes the marketing work for their company. We round out as five people. I've got a customer coordinator, name is Val. I got two graphic designers. One is Ashley, she works remotely, which has been working out great. We tried over COVID. Steven is our other graphic designer. We have a binding person, his name is Tom, and then I have a delivery driver, his name is Dane, and that kind of rounds out our team here at Minuteman Press.
Don't forget to participate in Largo's Small Business Month activities. For businesses, there is no charge for temporary events in the month of November, the busiest shopping month of the year. Everyone is encouraged to participate in two fun activities. The first is the Best of Largo Awards in partnership with the Tampa Bay Newspapers. Vote for your favorite Largo business at bestoflargo.tvnweekly.com from now through November 19, 2020. The second activity is Restaurant Roundup. The city is teaming up with Largo Recreation to host a series of restaurant roundup events at Largo Central Park on Sundays throughout the month of November. This is a great way to try some Largo good eats and keep it local. To learn more information about Restaurant Roundup and ways to show your support for Largo's Small Business Month, visit largo.com/business.
Hey, Mayor, I'd just like to say that was an outstanding job, Isabella, for you and everyone else that worked on that. That's really nice. Good job.
Yeah, I hope that you'll post that video on the city's Facebook page as well, and if you want to give me the one for Sunshine Ace, I'll probably be going there three times tomorrow because I'm working on some projects at the house. The last item in ceremonial is not on the agenda because I'm certain that Commissioner Carroll reads the agenda thoroughly, and I didn't want to ruin the surprise. So the Florida League of Cities sent me a plaque to present to Commissioner Carroll for his dedicated service and outstanding leadership while serving as a director from 2018 to 2020. He represented the 8th District as our representative, and he served the city and the district and the state very well. Thank you for your dedication. I'll give this to you afterwards. Normally, I'd shake your hand too, but you know.
I did see that the board sent us a really nice coffee table style book on the Everglades. Did you see that upstairs?
I did not see that.
Yeah, it's on the bookcase outside your office, but it's really, and I thought after you had a look at it, maybe it could go to our sustainability director. It's really a nice piece of work.
I will take a look at it. Thank you. Next up, we will have approval of the agenda.
Citizens' comment.
Next up, we will have citizens' comment. Thank you, Commissioner. Do we have any comments?
I have no cards tonight.
Okay, I believe, was there anybody online?
Let me just check. Bear with me for one second. Sorry, I did not have that open.
That's okay. And as usual, if you're going to speak about something that's on the agenda outside of the consent docket, you can please wait until that item comes up.
No, I have no emails.
Okay, thank you. Now we'll move on to approval of the agenda.
I'd like to pull item 8, move approval.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes 6-0. Next is approval of the minutes from the regular meeting of October 20, 2020.
So moved.
Second.
Any changes or corrections? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes 6-0. Can I hear the consent docket, please?
Item 5, authorization to enter into an emergency services contract for bid number 20-B-700 with Synagro for dewatering and hauling of biosolids. Item 6, authorization to purchase new fire rescue vehicles in accordance with Sourcewell Contract Number 2021120716-NAF from Allen J. Fleet Sales in the amount of $121,144.37 and vehicle equipment in the estimated amount of $30,000. Item 7, authorization to purchase communication equipment and accessories from Motorola Solutions in accordance with NASPO Purchasing Contract Number 43190000-18-NASPO-ACS-1 in the amount of $106,450.12. Item 9, approval of the Gateway Olmerton Subdivision replat. Item 10, authorization to settle the property damage claim for Abundant Life Ministries, 1550 South Belcher Road, in the estimated amount of $75,733. Item 11, authorization of expenditure for fiscal year 2021 contractual building services to MT Causey LLC, Nova Engineering and Environmental LLC, and Joe Payne Incorporated in the estimated amount of $75,000. Item 12, authorization to sign consent to operate agreement with RG's Restaurants Incorporated for bookmarked cafe renewal. Item 13, reappointments of Bertha Battle and Patricia Bell as members of the Largo Library Advocacy Board. Item 14, authorization to purchase heating, ventilation, and air conditioning controls from Engineered Control Systems in the amount of $55,048.13.
Thank you. You've heard the consent docket. I'll entertain a motion.
I move to approve the consent docket without commission discussion and including staff background provided in the commission packets.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes 6-0. I would like to thank Bertha Battle and Pat Bell for volunteering to serve once again on the Library Advocacy Board. Thank you so much. Item number 8.
Question.
Yes, sir.
I realize, I recall, we've been piecemealing this every year, just buying X number of bunker gear, and I see this time, finally, we're going for the whole nine yards on this. The question is, you're obviously going to come back again for another $150,000, whatever it is, so you're going to have two complete sets. But the sets that you currently have, you're going to have, some of them are going to be aging out. Because I, tell me if I'm wrong on this, but it seems to me we had it on a three-year cycle. We were buying like a third of them each year. It was something like that. And I'm trying to figure out, it's not in the memo here, how long do they last?
It was roughly 1/5, so every five years we return and over.
So we're doing 20% every year then?
Yes, sir.
Okay, so you're going five years. So you get this now, which is good. I'm glad to see this. So for the next five years, you're still going to, you're going to do the 20% then?
Ultimately, we'll continue to do 20% every year. This first couple of years is going to be a little bit inflated to get us to that two sets per member. That's why this number here you see is a larger number, but it's taken into account the stuff that we attrition out every year, as well as what we need to bolster that number to get everyone into two sets.
Okay, so you're, our first line firefighters, we've got, there's 67 of them, basically.
There's about 130 of them.
130?
Yes.
Yeah, I'm trying to get around where this figure's going to come in, because I don't mind coming back for this thing, and I want them to have the safety equipment, but what is the formula? So this is only going to do half of them then?
Yes, this is part of approximately three-year plan to get everyone into two sets of bunker gear. It's a very expensive endeavor to do it all in one year, so part of the discussion with city staff was to do it over three.
I understand. Henry would have a heart attack if you started doing this, and you'd have to have an EMS unit right outside the door. So this is going to happen every year now for the next 36, for the next three years.
Essentially, yes, until we get everyone into those two sets of assigned gear.
Okay. Answers my question. Thank you.
Okay, you're welcome. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions?
I move to approve authorization to purchase replacement firefighters' personal protective clothing from 10-8 Fire Equipment, Inc. in accordance with the Lake County Contract Number 17-0606-L in the amount of $156,487.88.
Have a motion and a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes 6-0. Thank you. Next is item number 15.
Good evening, Mayor and Commissioners. This item is a second and final reading of Ordinance 2021-01 to amend Chapter 16, Section 16-40 of the City of Largo Code of Ordinances to establish 25 mph maximum speed limit zones in the Eldiero neighborhood, per the city's new speed limit reduction process. The eligible streets are shown in yellow on the map. There have been no changes since first reading. It was approved by City Commission on first reading 6 to 0 on October 6, 2020, and staff is available for questions.
Ordinance Number 2021-01, an ordinance of the City of Largo, Florida, amending Chapter 16, Section 16-40 of the City of Largo Code of Ordinances to establish 25 mph maximum speed limit zones, providing for severability and providing for an effective date.
Thank you. Do we have any cards or public comment on this?
I have no cards. Checking email. I have no email either.
Okay, any questions from the commission? Commissioner Carroll.
Yeah, I was absent from the first discussion of this, and I'd just like to say that I'm very appreciative of the mechanism we have put in place where neighborhoods can solicit for this sort of relief. The only thing I'm unsure of is will there be some follow-up, some reporting, whether it just be citizen surveys or traffic counts or whatever to show the impact this has had?
We will be following up with this neighborhood. Exactly how we're going to do that, that's still being finalized, but we will definitely be following up probably within a few months after this is implemented.
I was just curious, but great job. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions?
I move to adopt ordinance Number 2021-01 on second and final reading.
Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes 6-0. Next is item number 16.
This item is a first reading of Ordinance 2021-27 to amend Section 1640 of the City of Largo Code of Ordinances by amending the speed limit for certain roads. The first modification is to establish a 25 mph speed limit zone for Ridge Road Southwest from 8th Avenue Southwest to West Bay Drive with the limits shown in yellow on the map, per the city's new speed limit reduction process. The eligible streets are shown in yellow on the map. There have been no changes since first reading. It was approved by City Commission on first reading 6 to 0 on October 6, 2020, and staff is available for questions.
Ordinance Number 2021-01, an ordinance of the City of Largo, Florida, amending Chapter 16, Section 16-40 of the City of Largo Code of Ordinances to establish 25 mph maximum speed limit zones, providing for severability and providing for an effective date.
Thank you. Do we have any cards or public comment on this?
I have no cards. Checking email. I have no email either.
Okay, any questions from the commission? Commissioner Carroll.
Yeah, I was absent from the first discussion of this, and I'd just like to say that I'm very appreciative of the mechanism we have put in place where neighborhoods can solicit for this sort of relief. The only thing I'm unsure of is will there be some follow-up, some reporting, whether it just be citizen surveys or traffic counts or whatever to show the impact this has had?
We will be following up with this neighborhood. Exactly how we're going to do that, that's still being finalized, but we will definitely be following up probably within a few months after this is implemented.
Yeah, I was just curious, but great job. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions?
I move to adopt ordinance Number 2021-01 on second and final reading.
Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes 6-0. Next is item number 16.
This item is a first reading of Ordinance 2021-27 to amend Section 1640 of the City of Largo Code of Ordinances by amending the speed limit for certain roads. The first modification is to establish a 25 mph speed limit zone for Ridge Road Southwest from 8th Avenue Southwest to West Bay Drive with the limits shown in yellow on the map, per the city's new speed limit reduction process. Street-specific speed studies are not required to be conducted as the previously conducted citywide speed limit confirmed initial eligibility for consideration, and the roadway section has achieved the required petitioning to lower the speed limit. And per Florida statutes, the new speed limit is required to be posted, and the city's traffic committee is finalizing locations of the proposed signage. The second modification to the code is to update the speed limits for two roadways, including Alternate Keen Road from East Bay Drive to McMullen Road, and 137th Street North from Walsingham Road to Wilcox Road. Both of these roadways have posted speed limits of 25 mph, yet the posted speed limit was never reflected in the code. City staff will also be, is currently inventorying existing speed limit zones, and will be bringing additional corrections of the speed limit tables to future commission meetings as needed. And staff is available to answer any questions.
Ordinance Number 2021-27, an ordinance of the City of Largo, Florida, amending Section 16-40 of the City of Largo Code of Ordinances by amending the speed limits for certain roads, providing for severability and providing for an effective date.
Thank you. Do we have any comments or cards on this?
I have no public comment.
Commissioner Holmes.
I'm glad to see this, but my question is the enforcement. I mean, even, I mean, Mayor lives off Ridge Road, and I've ridden my bike on Ridge Road many times, and that's a dragway. I mean, these people drive on that. The one guy went by me one day, I swear he's doing 60 miles an hour. Where does the enforcement come in? I mean, you can't have a cop on every corner, I know that, but are they going to be vigorously enforcing this? I mean, I like to reduce speed limits, but you know, to pass a law that's not enforced, why bother?
So you bring up a good point. Also, upon availability, we will be able to place some speed limit feedback trailers as they become available from the police department. Now, by lowering the speed limit, it may now qualify for some additional traffic calming based on our traffic calming policy. So again, we can monitor this neighborhood after the effects are, the changes are made, and take a look and see if this roadway may qualify for additional traffic calming measures.
Okay. I asked the mayor this some time ago about putting stop signs up in there, and there was something came up that you can't put the stop signs on Ridge Road.
Well, no, state law says that you can't put a stop sign solely for the purpose of traffic calming.
Okay.
The traffic patterns change from time to time. They are actually considering, I think, a stop sign down on 6th and Ridge Road.
Okay. But you could, we can put in traffic calming stuff. That's okay.
We can, and we bring that up about the traffic sign. The committee has voted to move forward with installing a sign at 6th Avenue. So we're finalizing what the details of that are going to be. Traffic stop signs are not necessarily traffic calming measures, but they could affect how the traffic is going to flow on that street. I don't have a date for when those will be installed yet.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. I did have a, thank you for adding the 137th as well as Alternate Keen. I did have a question. I received an email this afternoon from somebody who lives on 137th. I don't know that I've been over there recently, but they said that it's very much the same as Ridge Road. It's a cut-through. People fly down that road. What, and so it's been 25 miles an hour posted for a while. What is their next step if it continues to be a real speeding issue if cars are going 50 miles an hour through this neighborhood?
So the speed limit has been there since at least 2008. I don't know if prior to that. And we did conduct a speed study back in August of 2019 because the speed limit is already reduced. The 85th percentile, which is what we look at for setting speed limits, was 28 mph. So it does not actually warrant additional traffic calming.
So to somebody that doesn't know what the 28th, or the 85th percentile means exactly...
So 85% of the vehicles are traveling below 28 mph.
Thank you. So, and so that would be, that is the next step. Am I correct?
Yes.
You would look at the existing conditions there, and if they, if they meet, if they didn't meet that standard, if the 85th percentile was 35 mph or higher, you would then look at the engineering of the road and look at ways to purposely kind of slow traffic down, right?
That is correct, and it goes through a similar petition phase as does the speed limit reduction. So you're getting the buy-in of the residents on that street for whatever traffic calming option is selected.
Okay. And just for folks watching at home, those traffic calming options might be bulbouts or medians or narrowing of the road or roundabouts or any types?
Correct. There's all different sorts of things. Narrowing of the road, you mentioned, speed tables, we have quite a few in different neighborhoods of that. Some additional pavement markings, but you listed quite a few.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions?
I move to approve ordinance Number 2021-27 on first reading and schedule a second reading and public hearing on December 1, 2020.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes 6-0. Thank you very much. Next is item number 17.
I am very pleased to come before you this evening with our...
I am very pleased to come before you this evening with our Ordinance 2021-26, the first reading of the Team Member Employment Guidelines, formerly known as the Personnel Rules and Regulations. We had an excellent opportunity at work session to discuss the methodology and the specific, specifics as to the rewrite of the Personnel Rules and Regulations, now looked at as the Team Member Employment Guidelines. This came from quite a bit of work through a high-performance organization tenant, through the Executive Leadership Team Guidance. We had employees of all levels in the organization take on the leadership role and the very hard work of redoing these important guidelines that serve as a foundation for us here at the City of Largo, for our team members. And this evening, we're here to answer any questions you might have on this item, and are able to really underscore the importance that these specific guidelines give us in providing a flexible work environment, and one where the employees are engaged and understanding of what the rules are and how we all work best together. So any questions you might have on this item, I'm here to answer.
Ordinance Number 2021-26, an ordinance of the City of Largo, Florida, establishing the City of Largo Team Member Employment Guidelines and discontinuing the Personnel Rules and Regulations, repealing all ordinances in conflict therewith, and providing an effective date.
Thank you. Do we have any public comment?
I do not on this, but actually one came in on the previous item.
Okay.
It's from a Ms. Tywana McGee, and she says, "Thanks to Ms. Dion for her hard work. Our neighborhood has worked hard on the petitions."
Thank you, and she, and she has. She, she kind of headed up the petition drive down that road, so thank you to her as well, to Ms. McGee as well. It doesn't have a name next to it, but my calculations looks like Commissioner Smith.
Yes. Again, I'd like to highlight, I like that the four-week parental leave is in there. I do like to follow up a little, couple of questions. Does that also include parents that are not married? If, if both spouses are not married?
Father and mother.
How about two partners in domestic partnership?
I know the FMLA is pretty specific to father and mother of the child. So if there's a father and mother of the child, then they would be eligible for that leave. It's for birth, adoption, or foster care. So, again, it revolves around an FMLA relationship and a mother or father. That's what the FMLA is specific to.
Have we looked at, maybe broaden that out a little bit more for those who maybe, oh, okay.
I think it would, I think in the scenarios that we're discussing, I think we would be able to cover those individuals in the mother or father capacity, the foster or adoption.
Okay.
Yeah, I think we have pretty good coverage.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
And also the highlighting the domestic violence leave, I really like that in there. That highlighting, that is a very important thing.
Absolutely.
So I appreciate all the staff who put a ton of work into this, and thank you. And I'd like to stay on, you know, I'll catch up later on, a little bit more details on that.
Perfect.
But thank you so much.
Look forward to it.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions?
I move to approve ordinance Number 2021-26 on first reading and schedule a second reading on December 1, 2020.
Second.
Motion and a second. I'd just like to say thanks to all the folks that put a lot of time into this and made it so much better. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes six-zero.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next is item number eighteen.
Okay, good evening. This is the first reading of Ordinance 2021-25, which is amending the fiscal year 21 Police Department General Fund Budget in the amount of $161,200 to fund collective bargaining-related compensation adjustments. The 2020 through 2023 PBA supervisory contract was approved by the City Commission in October of 2020, so last month. The wage adjustments included in that contract require an additional $161,200 to provide the necessary pay increases to lieutenants and subsequent adjustments for the command staff and the chain of command above them. These funds are being appropriated out of the general fund reserves, which are estimated currently at $16 million or 20.7%. And I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Ordinance Number 2021-25, an ordinance of the City of Largo, Florida, amending the fiscal year 2021 budget adopted by Resolution Number 2279 by appropriating expenditures in the amount of $161,200 within the Police Department General Fund Budget to fund collective bargaining-related compensation adjustments, providing for an effective date.
Thank you. Do we have any cards or input on this?
I have no public input.
Any questions from the Commission?
I move to approve ordinance Number 2021-25 on first reading and schedule a second reading and public hearing on December 1, 2020.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes six-zero.
Good report, Jeff.
Next up is ordinance Number 2021-28.
Okay, this is also the first reading of 2021-28, which is also amending the fiscal year 21 Police Department General Fund Budget by appropriating revenues and expenditures in the amount of $90,300 for the receipt of the Coronavirus Emergency Supplemental Funding, or CESF, grant from the United States Department of Justice, which is a grant related to the JAG grant that the Police Department currently receives. The City Commission actually approved this grant application earlier in fiscal year 2020. We received information that the application was approved, and our intended use of the funds is acceptable. So that means we can now appropriate it in the budget for spending, and this budget amendment reflects that. Major Starling is here, along with the Police Chief, to answer any questions we have about the grant.
I'd like to jump in before you ask your questions. And earlier today, we were, had the pleasure of celebrating some promotions. So as my predecessor told me under mentoring, I'd like to introduce Major Ann Starling tonight. That'll be answering any questions on my behalf. I just wanted to introduce her to you guys tonight. You know her very well anyhow, but now in this new capacity, she's the administrative major, so she'll be handling a lot of the functions of this side of the house and seeing you guys more often, so.
Thank you, Chief. Thank you. Back in that bus right over me really quick, three days, so.
Traffic safety.
That's right. So I can answer any questions that you guys have about the grant. I've kind of been spun up a little bit, so hopefully any questions you have, if anybody has any.
Ordinance Number 2021-28, an ordinance of the City of Largo, Florida, amending the fiscal year 2021 budget adopted by Resolution Number 2279 by appropriating revenues and expenditures in the amount of $90,300 within the Police Department General Fund Budget for the receipt of a U.S. Department of Justice Coronavirus Emergency Supplemental Funding, parentheses, CESF, program, providing for an effective date.
Thank you. Do we have any questions for the major?
I move to approve ordinance Number 2021-28 on first reading and schedule a second reading and public hearing on December 1, 2020.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. I do have a question from Commissioner Smith.
Major, I have a question. Law enforcement, can you describe the law enforcement customer service messaging system a little bit? What is that?
A part of the Spider Grant, is that what you're talking about? So basically, Spider is, it's a software platform that does three things. It's, it's really pretty amazing, if you ask me. So it has a patrol function that will send, if you call the Police Department, it'll send out a message to you that says, hey, we've got an officer that's been dispatched. We're setting a perimeter. We're doing certain things. If a period of time goes by and you haven't been sent an officer yet, it's a theft not in progress or something, it'll actually send you either a text message or email that says, hey, we've been delayed, but things are going on. We're going to get an officer out to you as quick as possible. After the officer gets there, it'll actually send you a text message or an email with your report number, the type of crime you have, crime prevention tips, any advocacy victim information, anything that we can give to you. If it's assigned to a detective, it will tell you who the detective is, what the case status is, even if an arrest has been made. So it's really a great communication function for us. It saves those constant calls to the Police Department where our dispatchers have to take the call and then try to find the officer and try to find the detective that it's going to. The final phase of that is also like a feedback. So it actually sends a survey out to the actual person that calls us, and it says, how did we do? What kind of, and we know exactly what kind of crime it went to, or what kind of, like CAD response happened. Did we take too long? Or did you, in your opinion, did we have communication with you? Who was the officer that was out there, and what did you think? Part of that is our accreditation process, but also part of that is us measuring our success and our, kind of our successes in the, the community, and what our relationship is with those community members. So it's actually pretty amazing, and it actually gives us more of a transparency with the community and that feedback that we really don't have right now, because we send a survey out, and it may be somebody we never even responded to, or somebody that we have responded to that does have either good or bad things, and we just never hear back from them. So it's actually pretty, it's just a software platform that we can use to get some communication out there to the community itself.
And following up on that, if this is successful, and this, we are already, are we somewhat using this already?
We are not yet. We don't have that in place at this time. We were waiting for the funding to come around.
So, okay. I'd like to keep up on this, because I think if this is successful, I think that our, our reach out to our citizens is a great opportunity, and follow-up is a big thing with a lot of citizens. They like to know that, you know, their government's actually doing something.
Absolutely.
So I really think that, so you pass.
Thank you. I appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Carroll.
Well, I couldn't let her go by, Major. I'm sorry you aren't more familiar with this agenda item. Sounds like you were kind of reaching there. Thank you. But I, it's really more of a comment, go figure, right?
Yeah.
The two, last two agenda items, the first being the labor contract, and then something you mentioned in your presentation about accreditation, the pursuit of these sorts of grant, grant funds in the interest of improving community communication and relations. We've lived through a variety of different efforts to, to get feedback from the community, everything from phone calls, as you mentioned, to, to survey cards, and none of them worked very well.
Sure.
So this is a huge step forward, and in the current climate in our country, I think this is certainly a good example of what others might think about the accreditation process, and the level of professionalism is very important to me. The people in leadership positions like yourself in the Police Department represent us very well, and we all sleep better at night knowing that you guys are doing the job. And I just want to say thank you, but more than that, I want to, like, like Commissioner Smith said, I want to invite the community to participate. This is, communication's a two-way street.
Absolutely.
And this is a huge step forward, so nice job.
Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Holt, Vice Mayor Holt.
Yes, I just wanted to say, Major Starling. But I also did have a question, though. So some people still have landlines. So are we still going to communicate with them? I mean, I know this was about the grants, but since we're talking, I think this is a fascinating procedure that we're, we're putting out.
Landlines, we can't get around the landline, of course, with text messaging.
We will still make that contact.
Yes, it's an, we can get their email as well. So if they have an email address, which most people do, we can still try to make that contact. I don't know how it's going to work if they don't have either one of the two. I think most folks at this point either have a cell phone or an email address. But if they don't, then hopefully we can come, you know, kind of cross that bridge when we come to it. We would actually make those contacts, because it is still important to get that information back to us.
Yeah, I was concerned, I wanted to make sure that we were still going to do old school, if that's all that's available, and not just leave some of those people out.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Since we're talking about communicating, I had a question about, is it, I don't think it's possible, but is it possible to text a message into our comm center about maybe a crime that's going on, or something you're concerned about?
We have different programs that are available in the comm center right now. We don't have a text to our actual comm center, dispatch center, I don't believe. We do have other programs that we're looking at. There are other certain programs that can actually take over someone's cell phone. It's called CARBING, and we have it right now, but they're kind of letting us use it as a trial, and it'll allow them, if they allow us to, we can take over their cell phone and see where they are, see what their cell phone sees, that kind of stuff. But we don't, and the chief may correct me, but we don't have any text message into our CAD system right now.
Do you, either you or the chief, do you know if other, any other departments have that? If somebody sees something going on, and they just, they really don't want to call the comm, and, and...
And they would prefer to text it?
Yeah.
I don't know of any other agency in the area that does have that. I know there are agencies in the country that have that, but I don't know that there are any agencies in our area that have that at this point.
Interesting to see the kind of pros and cons.
Absolutely.
I'm sure that might increase the number of calls, but then you might get more information for something as well.
Sure. Yes, sir.
Any other questions, since we're currently drilling the major?
Is she on probation?
She's doing well.
I do. I have a little bit of probation to go through, so I'll stand here as long as you need me to, sir.
I'll, I'll entertain a motion. Okay. I do have a motion and a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes six-zero. Thank you, and congratulations.
Thank you all. I appreciate it. Thank you.
Mr. Zimmet, do you have anything this evening?
I have nothing to add.
Thank you. Mr., Commissioner Holmes?
I have nothing.
Commissioner Robinson?
Just wanted to say, congratulations to Major Starling, my friend's Major Starling, as well as the other lieutenants and sergeants that were promoted today for the Largo PD. It's a, it's a great opportunity for everybody, and I couldn't be happier for, for Ann. She's a great person and a great asset to Largo Police Department, truly. And just wanted to say, wish Commissioner Holmes luck this evening. And we'll see what happens, but good luck. That's all I had tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. Vice Mayor Holt.
Yes, congratulations to a lot of the things that Commissioner Robinson said. But I just had this little thing I wanted to throw out there, and regardless of what happens tonight, who wins, who loses, just remember that we're all in this together, and united we stand, divided we fall. God bless America.
Thank you. Well said. Commissioner Carroll.
I can't go without saying, again, congratulations to Major Starling. And I had the opportunity yesterday to visit with a brand-new lieutenant over at the Bel Air Police Department. Her predecessor, Major Randy Chaney, who happens to reside in Bel Air, is now a member of that department. And he started, I think he left Largo one day and started there the next. And I should have taken the opportunity during the unscheduled ceremonial item to thank you for the opportunity to serve with the Florida League of Cities and the Suncoast League of Cities. It's been quite a ride. It's been very educational and informative, and I think, as a team, we have brought Largo into the Florida League of Cities, where people know who we are, and, and we have good communications and networking with the, with our other elected officials. So it was a very important role to fill, and now we're going to continue with that with Commissioner Robinson, and, but all of us have played a role in that, and it wouldn't have been possible without the support of the Commission and the city administration, so thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Smith.
Sorry. This Friday, from 4:00 to 6:00, Largo will be hosting a plant giveaway at Belcher Soccer Complex. Again, that is this Friday from 4:00 to 6:00. Our Largo staff will be hosting a plant giveaway at Belcher, Belcher Soccer Complex. The last one was a great turnout by our citizens, and I thought our staff did a wonderful job, so I look forward to seeing how they handle that one over there. Also on Saturday is Safety Day from 10:00 to 1:00, hosted by the Largo PD at the police station off of Highland. Again, that's this Saturday, Safety Day from 10:00 to 1:00, hosted at the PD station, police station off of Highland. Also, I want to thank all the voters, people who got out to vote. Seeing the numbers of people who got out to vote was astonishing, and, and I appreciate, and, and what Vice Mayor Holt said, I 100% agree with you. I also want to say thank you to all the people who stepped up to be poll watchers and poll volunteers and assist in this time when we needed that. And as a country, we, we do need to come together and respect each other and love each other and show kindness, so. Thank you, and thank you for voting, and that's all I have.
Thank you. And the event thing, there are also, we're doing a electronics and chemical drop-off event, partnering with the county. Our solid waste folks are going to be at Largo High School on Saturday morning.
I got a truckload for them.
I'll probably see you there. I, I wanted to mention the, our special events people in Parks and Rec put on Drive-A-Ween this past weekend. Man, there was, like, a thousand cars came through. Everybody from the, the local businesses to the local organizations, to the different departments, everybody that was involved had great costumes and great energy, and the people coming through were, were all decorated cars and dressed up, and they were really excited, I think, to be doing anything, really. But it was, it was a really great event. I know it kind of took place of our Halloween spectacular, which is a huge event, but it was, it was a great replacement. was, it was a great replacement. We were able to do it with good social distancing and they got a bag of candy at the end rather than everybody giving them candy. So it was really well done and thank you to everybody that worked hard on that and everybody that came out and, and dressed up. Even the city manager dressed up. True story. Lastly, Gloria put in the, in the office right back here, list of board liaisons. So if you have not put your name on that list, all the good spots are going fast. So go ahead and take, take a minute on your way out and sign up for what board you would like to be the liaison for. And that's all I have. Mr. Schubert.
I have nothing this evening.
Any action items?
The only one I had was to post a small business video to the Facebook page.
Thank you so much. A meeting is adjourned.[1681.88]